Evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 on February 10. All council members are present. I'd like to ask the audience to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which sustains us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Committee Correspondence to Council. Does any councillor have any committee correspondence they'd like to share at this time? Seeing none. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, Public Comment. Nobody has signed up in the public comment sign-in sheet. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Approval of Minutes. We have the February 3, 2000... It says 10, but I'm guessing that's a typo and should be 2020 minutes unless we're approving minutes from 10 years ago.
We can approve those minutes, too. 10 years later, whatever.
Well, it fell through the crack.
Do we have a motion to approve the February 3 minutes? Motion's been made by Councillor Mintorn.
Second.
Second by Councillor Copeland. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
That passes 7-0. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, Consent Items. There are no consent Agenda Item 8, Action Items. We have Item A, Second and Final Reading on Budget Amendment Number 6 for the March primary. Councillor Gunn, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As part of the fiscal year 2020 budget process, the city clerk requested funding to support the presidential primary in March 2020. At the time, the state had not made a final determination on if this would be a primary or caucus vote. The state has now passed LD Number 245, Act to Reestablish a Presidential Primary System in Maine. Therefore, funding to cover the cost of the primary must now be appropriated from the fund balance. The city staff recommends approval, and be it ordered that the city council approves the second and final reading of Budget Amendment Number 6, Fiscal Year 2020.
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion made by Councillor Gunn, and second by Councillor Copeland. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to Item B, Two Marguerite Road, Chapter 81 Review, Donation of Land for Habitat for Humanity. Councillor Purdy, do you have a motion?
Yes. The planning board has reviewed Chapter 81 request for Two Marguerite Road, map 101, Lot 17, existing location of a city playground. The proposal is for the city to donate land to Habitat for Humanity, leaving 30,000 square feet for the playground lot. After review at its February 4 meeting, the board unanimously, 5-0, forwarded a positive recommendation of the attached report. I move to accept the planning board's Chapter 81 report of Two Marguerite Road.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councillor Purdy, second by Councillor Mintorn. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, New Business. We have Item A, Adoption of a City Seal at this time. I'd like to bring up the Communications Director, Emily Roy, for a brief presentation. Councillors, the brand style guide was also passed out for you to have at the dais.
All right. Just need to make sure everybody at home can see this, too. So, as some of you know, maybe not all of you with the new councillors, but last... or two years ago, we adopted a new logo for the city. And when we were preparing materials for the brand style guide for that, we realized that in 2015, when the seal was re-digitized, that was never codified or reflected in any documents and had not gone to the council for approval. So what I'm doing here tonight is just recommending that we modify the code to reflect those three items that we're using. So amend Chapter 1, 1-19 seal, to recognize that we have a historic seal, which the city clerk, Michelle Hughes, shared with all of you in the back, that the press, that would be used on official documents. Then we have the digitized seal. It's a CRISPR rendering. This is being used on all of the council materials. This is the official seal for city business, for digital items. And then we have the logo, which is... the use of that is defined in the brand style guide. So the recommendation would be to have the code reflect all three elements, maintain that inscription that's included to respect the heritage of the city, but then have the brand style guide reflect the proper use of each of these. And so what I have here is just the original seal at the top, the re-digitized version on the bottom, and then what the code currently looks like.
Any questions from councillors? Councillor Copeland?
Did you say that you wanted to keep the top one?
So the version of the top one that would be maintained is the one that's in the back. It's the official press. So on the official records maintained in the clerk's office, that's the one that they would use, so that we don't have to modify those presses. We respect that, the history of the city and the heritage. But we would not be using digital renderings of that version. That's just for that physical press only. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Mintorn?
I move we amend Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 1 through 19, seal to recognize the city has an historic seal, a digitized seal, and a logo, which will be on file with the city clerk. And the brand style guide will describe the different uses of each.
And that motion is so that we revisit this as an action item on February 17?
Correct.
Is that... is there a second for that motion?
Second.
A motion's been made by Councillor Mintorn, second by Councillor Johnston. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item B is city street acceptance requests, one for Ocean Greens Drive, partial, and Caroline Way. Councillor Copeland?
The background on this item is that Mike Mazzouian of Mazzouian Development has requested review of city street acceptance of Caroline Way, or Caroline Way, and a portion of Ocean Greens Drive. The portion of Ocean Greens Drive was developed as part of the Juniper Knoll subdivision, approved by the planning board in 2011. Caroline Way was partially developed as part of the Juniper Knoll subdivision and completed as part of the Copperleaf subdivision, approved by the planning board in 2013. This portion of Ocean Greens Drive connects Richard's Way to Caroline Way. Ocean Greens Drive connects to the other roads throughout the subdivision, but ultimately will be a dead end. Caroline Way is a dead end street off Ocean Greens Drive. Thirteen residential lots were developed as part of the Juniper Knoll subdivision, and six additional residential lots were developed on Caroline Way as part of the Copperleaf subdivision. This acceptance review request includes the common area shown on the Juniper Knoll plan, along with easements as specified in the deeds. Mazzouian Development also has a pending request for acceptance of Country Club Drive, which will be reviewed separately. And found online are the exhibits. One is a request letter from the developer, and the other is the warranty deeds and as-built plans. Although I thought I saw the plans with the original dates. The recommendation from the planning board is that the planning board has forwarded a positive recommendation with the conditions that the applicant plant trees and remove the Juniper Knoll's sign from the proposed city's right-of-way in the spring. The city is holding performance guarantee funds to ensure the work is satisfactorily completed in the spring of 2020. A motion to be used for the consent agenda. I move to accept Caroline Way and this specified portion of Ocean Greens Drive as city streets, is what we will propose.
Motion's been made by Councillor Copeland, second by Councillor Mintorn. Discussion? Councillor Copeland?
Yeah, I do have discussion. It says here that there's been funds put aside for the planting. And I would like to know how much and where the funds are. I'm going back to the Saco Island East issue with the tree cutting, and they had a nebulous idea amount put aside, and trying to track it down, and where was it, and how much was it. I don't want to go there. I want to know what the situation is.
Perhaps we should bring up the city planner, Emily Colpreska, to answer any questions you have regarding this item.
I do have others. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So the Planning Department, Planning and Development Department, holds performance guarantees, letters of credit, usually in the forms of letters of credit. And so what will happen is we would reduce... either we would reduce the letter of credit down to that amount. It hasn't been reduced yet, so we're actually holding more than is required at this point in time. The amount for the tree planting is $7,500. That's been reviewed with Ryan Samar, Parks and Rec Director. The amount for the sign to be removed is $2,500. As far as the sign, the applicant has entered into an agreement with the city indicating that the sign must be removed no later than May 30, 2020, was the date. If for some reason there's extreme weather conditions or some extreme reason, there is an option to extend that date, but May 30 is the agreed-upon date at this point. The sign, we as staff reviewed this, as well as the planning board reviewed this option because the sign is in the city's right-of-way.
I have a question about the letter of credit issue. A letter of credit is just a general letter from a banker. It really has no financial value. It's kind of like them saying, "Well, he... sure, he looks like he has plenty." That's not... I don't find that to be sufficient.
Respectfully, a letter of credit is how we handle many of our projects. It's most common with the city projects. It cannot be released until the parties of the city agree. That's usually the city administrator and city planner with the bank that the letter is with. And it's also in our ordinance right now that the performance financial guarantees will be set up through a letter of credit or an escrow account. I believe there may also be a passbook option, but traditionally, we see letters of credit or escrow accounts. And they're usually established at 150% of whatever the cost estimate is that goes through an approval process with our... with the Public Works, as well as Planning and Development Department.
Well, thank you. That's good information. That just makes me think that we need to clear up that language and remove the letter of credit. It has no... let's get a legal opinion on it, at least. I would be in favor of having escrowed funds, but as we've seen on Saco Island East, that it becomes a real issue when we just say letter of credit. Any... I, you know, I could go down... anybody can get a letter of credit. I don't have any satisfaction that that means that the money will be spent towards the trees. And may I also ask, were there any residents present when this was discussed? And I'd like to know what the issues that they were concerned about were.
I don't believe residents were present when this item was discussed through planning board. It was a public meeting. Residents could have come out if they chose, and I don't believe that residents were present when it was discussed.
All right. Well, my... I realize that I read this one, but I'm... I don't want this to move forward. I want this to be tabled until the trees are in place.
So there's been a motion by Councillor Copeland to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councillor Copeland to table the item, and been seconded by Councillor Archer. Any discussion on the table and motion? Councillor Mintorn?
Yeah. Could we ask Pat Fox to come up?
Point of order? It's a tabling motion.
Can't discuss it.
There's no discussion.
Yep. Thank you.
Can I pull that back for discussion?
You can withdraw your amendment.
I withdraw my amendment.
Councillor Archer, would you like to withdraw your second?
Yes, withdraw.
Okay. Withdrawing the tabling motion. Back to the main motion. Are there any...
Could we ask Director Fox to come up and comment on this item, since he's the one who'd be receiving the streets in question?
Director Fox, would you come up and answer the question?
Is there any benefit to the city of holding off on this for those reasons, or is it actually going to create more problems between now and that time?
While I'm never excited to inherit new infrastructure, I have to say we have gotten a lot of calls from this... this acceptance process has been going since September. These residents have been in their homes for probably seven years now, some of them. So the last few months, we've seen an increase from calls from these 10 to 13 homes, or whatever it is, looking for all of the city services that all of the abutting streets receive. We have pulled letters of credit in the past and not had a problem with them being accessible to us to finish subdivision components. It doesn't happen often. There seems to be enough teeth to however they are structured right now, that the developers look to finish the work versus having us pull that... pull those funds and have that tarnish on their financials. So we haven't seen a problem in the past. The liabilities to us for the street trees and the sign removal are pretty limited. It's not like the subdivisions that we're looking for surface pavement, a curb, or all of those other drainage systems to be completed. All of that stuff is 100% done to the satisfaction of the city engineer. So we're prepared to take over the infra... fully prepared to take over the infrastructure. We hear from the homeowners on a very regular basis, whether they made it to the public meeting or not. We hear from them weekly if issues aren't taken care of out there and held to the same standard as the abutting properties. So I'm confident that the remaining work will happen in April. There are other subdivisions at play with that developer that I feel like the work will happen on those roads.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Johnston?
Are you currently plowing these roads?
We are currently plowing this phase. And that occurred because there were hangups... there were delays in the acceptance process. I typically... we typically do not like to accept roads in the middle of the winter. If we're going to be plowing them, we would prefer to get them in November or December, when we can mark out and see all of the assets that could be affected by the plow, and mark those off, and keep the road in the condition we expect to see a city road kept in during the winter. So I prefer to have them before the winter starts. So with some of the delays that were not all at the hands of the developer, we entered into a temporary agreement that went along with the street tree language. That's all been before Tim Murphy. So we have been plowing those since beginning or middle of... beginning of January or so.
Does that also apply... because we're accepting a partial portion of one of these, I guess both of these roads. So are you plowing all the way down to the end of like Caroline?
Caroline is... Caroline would be fully on this. The temporary agreement was, it had to make it through planning board approval. And then because of the council turnover and just the scheduling of this over the last couple of months, it had to pass planning board approval first and be put before this. And then that temporary plowing agreement goes away if you turn... if you don't accept the road. If you do accept the road, it just becomes part of our infrastructure, everyday infrastructure. We are going further down what is Ocean Greens, the first. We're going into the Phase 2 street only for the purpose of it's a lot easier and safer for our plow truck to turn around on the future permanent turnaround than it would be at the phase line of the project. That's not necessarily unusual. We've done that on Smith Lane behind Amato's, when that... it was easier to drive through than to turn the truck around in certain situations. So when that occurs, we just make sure we have any turnaround areas, we have the rights and permissions of the people that... the person that owns it.
Really, I was getting at. I was just curious if we have liability covered. And then the other thing I have is really just a comment, and I could be wrong, and perhaps the planner could follow up on this, but my understanding of a letter of credit is a guarantee by a bank. So if, in the event, the funds... they didn't give the funds, or they didn't do the planting, the bank would cover it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this matter? Councillor Copeland?
Thank you, Director Fox. I have heard that you're plowing outweighs the developers' plowing big time, and that it's a great job that you guys do, and really appreciate it. And I also appreciate that you've heard from people and want this to go forward, so that affects my decision. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to the administrative update, City Administrator Brian Caenrath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to quickly recognize the recent achievements of two of our department heads, neither of whom are here tonight, so they're off the hook a little bit. First, Saco Water Resource Recovery Department Director Howard Carter, who has been with the city now for 26 years, was given the Founder's Award at the New England Water Environment Association Annual Conference at the end of January. The award is given by the NEWEA Executive Committee in Recognition of Long-Term Contributions to NEWEA, Dedicated Service of the Industry in Any Facet of Water Pollution Control, Notable Achievements or Accomplishments in the Environmental Field, or Recognition to a Renowned Individual or Individuals. So congratulations, Director Carter, on that award. Next, I'd also like to recognize Chief... Fire Chief John Duros, who has recently been awarded his Chief Fire Officer Level 2 certification. This program is developed by the Main Fire Chiefs Association. It looks not only at work experience and training, but also professional contributions, memberships, and community involvement. Chief Duros has demonstrated a great deal of involvement in all of these areas, and it is a testament to his hard work and dedication to the position of fire chief for the city of Saco. So congratulations to both Director Carter and Chief Duros.
Please give them a round of applause, please. Thank you. Does any of the councillors have any questions for City Administrator Caenrath? Okay, moving on to Item 11, Council Discussion and Comment. Any councillor discussion and comment? Okay, seeing none. I do have a couple of things that I would like to remind folks about. As the US Census gets started, there is an opportunity to earn extra money, $20 an hour by working for the United States government in the census, 2020census.gov/jobs. That is available and important to your city.
Mr. Mayor, individuals who are earning any kind of main care benefits, food stamps, or whatever else, those dollars they earn as a census person are not counted against their benefits.
Thank you, Councillor Mintorn. Also, I would like to say thank you to the Public Works staff, the Police Department, and the Fire Department for their efforts during the storms on Friday and Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Your service to the community is exceptional, and I just want to say thank you. And also, on a personal note, I want to thank Fire Chief Duros, who isn't here, but I happened to get a constituent email me on Sunday. They were out of power, and they were staying in a hotel. I emailed Brian and Fire Chief Duros. He sent over... as the EMA Director, he sent over one of his staff members, and the problem was rectified. And the constituent was able to get back into their home and have heat. So thank you again to Fire Chief Duros and all emergency services for their efforts. So, thank you again to Fire Chief Duross and all emergency services for their efforts. Item 12, we do not have an executive session tonight, so that leaves us with Item 13, An Adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councillor Mintorn, second by Councillor Archer. Hand vote, all in favor? It is unanimous. We are adjourned at 7... 6:58.